Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this special session of the Select Board for a listening session regarding the proposed intersection improvements by the Mass DOT, including that, the roundabout. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting into order. And if everyone who can rise, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Stroud, can you lead us in the pledge? Let's go through our roll call. Mr. Esco.
Here.
Mr. Bishop.
Here.
Mr. Stroud.
Here.
And Mr. Diver, here. Thank you. And just kind of coming down for a couple of kind of meeting house rules, if you will. Again, we're really interested in hearing your comments. We are going to set it a time of about two minutes for each comment. And if we run, if we have more time, we can kind of loop back through that. But at least two minutes per comment. And then I have received approximately, I think, last count was 12 letters and emails. So then I'll read those into the record. And then there'll be comments from Mass DOT and our Traffic Commission, the Select Board, and then I'll close the meeting with final comments. I'd like to introduce the Mass DOT representatives. Jackie, if you could give us a quick wave. Jackie Davis.
May I introduce Mark?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thanks. My name's Jackie Davis, and I'm a design consultant with HGR, working on behalf of Mass DOT. And this is Mark Moore from District One.
Great. Thank you both for coming. And as you see, there are a couple of poster boards here. And thank you to Alyssa and Tom for providing those and Mass DOT for the designs. If you want to use these for your speaking points, feel free to come down and point to different pieces of the design. And then we'll go from there. But again, thank you for this great turnout. Really appreciate it. And we'll get started. Thank you. Yep. Oh, thank you. Yeah, a couple of other housekeeping rules. Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Tom and Alyssa will have microphones, and I'll walk to you to hand the microphone out so you can make your comment. And it's live through DCTV. It's being livestreamed as well. And I think many people are familiar with this building, but the restrooms are out the hall. Take a left. There's a boys' room, girls' room, right there in the hall. Thank you. And we will go ahead and start the listening session. So who's up first? Who would like to make a comment? Don't be bashful.
I'm Joseph Albano. I live at 609 South Street in Dalton. I've been traveling that intersection for 27 years and haven't had any problems with it. In my opinion, I think the state has a solution in search of a problem, and I don't think that it's worth the time or the money to make any radical changes. Perhaps the most changes would be some right-hand turn lanes to get down to South Street from Dalton Avenue, to get down to Husatonix Street from now Main Street. Perhaps some left-hand turn lanes, an additional lane to get into the cemetery if you're heading towards Dalton. But as far as putting a roundabout there and changing all signaling, I think it's just a work project that the state wants to spend some money on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Tom King. Those of you who've read the letters to the editor probably know what I'm about to say. I live at 47 East Street in Dalton. I'm a motorist, a motorcyclist, a bicyclist, and a pedestrian. If, it's hard to say what I want to say. This intersection has a bad reputation. I think, what did you say, number five in District One when it comes to accidents? Recently, I saw another accident at the intersection of Husatonix Street, another T-bone accident. Just yesterday, I stopped at the red light at the top of Husatonix Street. The guy behind me squeezed between my truck and the sidewalk, and I thought he was going to make a right turn and go up Crane Hill to the center of town. No, he drove right through the red light, kept on going. People nowadays, every, fewer and fewer people nowadays, have any interest in obeying the law, in obeying regulations, in proper conduct, in good manners. And we have to start designing roads to meet the fact that we are sharing roads with people who don't give a hoot about the law. Red lights, stop signs, yield signs, no passing zones, speed limits, they all require a moral commitment on the part of the operator to obey the law. If you're an anarchist who has no use for law, who has no use for proper conduct, good manners, you don't care. You drive through red lights, you drive through stop signs, you cross double yellow lines and go head along at oncoming traffic to get around the law-abiding citizen who's obeying the speed limit ahead of you. This is a solution to a problem that we have. That intersection has a lot of T-bone accidents because people come up from Pittsfield, they're madder than hell because they've been stopped at 99 lights between North Street and Dalton, and they just go through the light because they know that our underfunded and undermanned police department can't be there all the time to keep an eye on them. Not just this intersection. I cross up at the top of the hill at the Flansburgh Avenue lights frequently in my walks around town. About one out of every three times, somebody comes to the top of Crane Hill, and even though there's a solid red light and I have a walk light, they blow right through. If I point the finger of shame at them, they raise the clenched fist with the upraised middle district finger and just kind of wave it, you know? They know what they're doing, and they don't care. I would like to see not just a roundabout there, I'd like to see a roundabout at the intersection of Husatonix Street and Main Street. I'd like to see one at the intersection of Flansburgh Avenue and Main Street. I'd like to see one in front of the Town Hall. I'd like to see one at North Street and Main Street. I'd like to see one up at that wonderful intersection by my house where East Street, East Main Street, Old Windsor Road, and Orchard Road come together. Somebody's going to get killed there someday. Up here, right where people come out of this school, I can't tell you how many times I've almost been run over in that crosswalk with the flashing yellow lights because they don't look where they're going. The town line lights down where Dalton Avenue or Dalton Division Road and Hubbard Avenue meet East Street and Dalton, or East Street and Pittsfield, South Street and Dalton, up at where Washington Mountain Road and Williams Street and Dalton Division Road come together. These are all intersections where people tend to ignore the stop signs because they're in a hurry. The wonderful thing about a roundabout is it doesn't require a moral commitment on the part of the driver to obey the law. You can't avoid taking your foot off the gas and putting it on the brake when you come to a roundabout, or you're going to bounce a little.
We're almost at time. Thank you for your comments, and thank you so much. Next. Alyssa, right behind you.
Is it okay if I take the mask off? I'm Bob Shepherd, a teacher. My last year was taught right in this building. I live on Otis Avenue, and like everybody else, the only way I can get to my home from Pittsfield is through the intersection that we're talking about. I have always wondered why the United States moves traffic by stopping it when most other civilized countries have been using roundabouts for thousands of years. There's a town in Ohio that I heard described on a public radio broadcast a couple of months back. They had the proposal for one roundabout to be put in, and the townspeople were just up in arms about it. Somehow, the vote just barely managed to allow for the creation of a roundabout in a particularly troublesome intersection. People got used to it. And now, that town, and I wish I could remember the name of it, it begins with C, has something like 55 roundabouts. People loved it. Traffic moved very slow, very smoothly. Accidents were cut way back. And although the intersection we're talking about is, to me, a little troublesome, I'm not sure how I would design it if I were in charge of that, but I think that we would all benefit from it and may find that the previous speaker's ideas about other roundabouts would probably be forthcoming. I urge this town to okay it.
(inaudible)
Hi, Dave Pedrati, 201 Dalton Vision Road. I've probably been through this intersection 15,000 times in my life, and I don't think I've ever seen an accident there. That doesn't mean it hasn't happened. I'm not against roundabouts. I think roundabouts are great. Certain areas, like the gentleman said, Dalton, we could use some roundabouts. But I think the cost of this one, in terms of how it's going to upset the traffic for over a year or a year, and concerns about getting ambulances and emergency vehicles through the intersection for the two years or a year that it's being made, is concerning to me. I think roundabouts work good, like where 91 and Greenfield, that roundabout down there that they just put in is fantastic. This one has too many hills, too many Rosewood Hills coming up. You've got Husatonix Street coming up, you've got Main Street coming down, you've got South Street coming up. I don't think it's going to work good there. I don't think it's worth the town of Dalton having to put up with that for a year. I think roundabouts are good, but in this case, I think we could use the money for other things. Like, we don't have any lines in our roads. Our cars come equipped with lane departure, and they can't even work around here because there's no lines in the roads and no lines on the side for breakdown lanes. We could use the money for other things, and I just don't think this is necessary. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Come on in. Mr. Dresch.
I'm Bill Dresch, 878 South Street in Dalton. I've been driving through that intersection my entire driving life, and that's exactly how I feel when I go through that intersection. I'm driving for my life. I'm a former DOT employee, retired, and I have to say I advocate this kind of construction and this kind of build-out. I drove for almost a year and a half through the Look Park Roundabout, and as for the level of disruption, it was minimal at best. As for getting emergency vehicles through there, there weren't any problems. So when it comes to the disruption of that for construction, I can take a year of pain versus a previous lifetime of taking my life in my hands when I come through this intersection. I hope all of you look forward to some nice, smooth transition through this intersection when it's constructed. Just a little bit of a side note. Heading eastbound into the town, I was stopped at that intersection for 15 seconds with 19 cars around me. I threw down some quick and dirty numbers. Just for your information, that's six cars running year-round idling at that intersection. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Art Sanders. I live on 540 South Street. I grew up at 517 South Street. So my whole life, I've been going through that intersection, including as a child going to Crainville School, where I used to ride my bike. I don't let my kids ride my bike through that intersection for pretty obvious reasons. And I actually teach them now how to get through that intersection to make sure that cars are completely stopped because they absolutely do not follow the red lights or stop when the lights are red. I'm just curious for this discussion tonight, because I am open to the roundabout idea. I've studied this. I don't understand how this improves people walking, or pedestrians or cyclists crossing that intersection. For if you're a kid going from South Street to Crainville School, how does this improve? I don't see it, despite my wanting to see this intersection change. A second note, I also have, my office was up in the corner for years, so I've seen the accidents. I've seen people running from Crane Company to accidents with fire extinguishers and whatnot. It's extremely dangerous, so I can understand the need for change. But I would just like to see the pedestrian issue addressed in this discussion. Thanks.
You have something else you'd like to comment on, Tia?
Hi, Hubie. I live at Hayeswood Court, Dalton. We've been driving through this intersection for about 28 years ourselves, and we've seen about two accidents. And I'm not saying there's not a problem with people running red lights, it's a problem. And I don't know how you solve that. But as far as North Hampton, we drive there every week, and we've seen the roundabout. The roundabout does work good. But the big difference between that roundabout and the one you're proposing is there's a light now at the end of Husatonix Street. No matter how you're going to have that solved, you're going to have people stopping down the way up from Husatonix, it turns green, you've still got a roundabout with people flowing. As far as people getting in, you know, kids or anybody, it's going to constantly, right now it stops. There is traffic, you can go out, they have to be careful, but they can stop, and they can get across. With a roundabout, they're never going to stop. It's going to continue on and on. I guess my final comment is, I want to know, is this going to be a vote? Do we, are we going to be allowed to vote on it as a town? Because the majority of people that we've spoken to are against it, totally against it. And if the voice of the town is heard, it's going to get voted down. But are we going to have this shut down after all without a vote? I guess that's the question.
I'll take a minute to respond to that, just for clarity for the group here as well, is that as you look at that road, it is Mass DOT jurisdiction, and as I've seen other projects move through other cities, I recognize that the voice of the town wasn't heard. And so as the Select Board listened to the Mass DOT presentations back in March, we all got a lot of different feedback, different situations. But this is the voice that we need tonight, and that the Select Board will then take into deliberation on our meeting on September 27th, and then will take a position on behalf of the town. So it's not a formal vote process, but that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to hear from the residents and take that into consideration. The other point of clarity real quick is, from a funding perspective, this is not town money, it's actually state-funded money. So that is just one thing, just to make sure it's clear, that we don't have a decision from a funding perspective, because we love to take this $2.1 million and apply it somewhere else, but that's not a decision for the town either. So that's kind of why we're here tonight, is to listen to the residents. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Does that, does that, oh? Okay.
I'm Dick Locatell. If you're a bully with the present intersection, you're going to cause problems. If you're a bully with a roundabout, you're also going to cause problems. There are laws that apply to roundabouts just as much as they apply to the intersection as it exists now. So I don't really see what effect that has. And as far as stopping, if you have a lot of traffic through a roundabout, and I've seen this, it slows traffic down. There's no question about it. The amount of traffic that can go through that intersection is reduced considerably. There will be delays that we don't have right now. So I'm basically against the roundabout as I envision it. I have not seen accidents. I think the statistics are about one a month, according to the write-up. And there are all sorts of reasons why accidents occur. If you have drunk drivers, you're going to have accidents on the roundabout, just the same as you would now. So I really don't see the need for it, frankly.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Amy? Can I go with the microphone? No, she's going to go to the back first, and then...
Hi, I'm Lori Alucio. I live on Hemlock Hill in Dalton, and we drive up South Street every day and park the car and walk a couple of miles, have to drive back down South Street. I'm not opposed to a roundabout. My concern is, if we're coming down from Dalton and have to take that left-hand turn onto South Street with the traffic, and there's always so much traffic coming from Dalton Avenue towards Dalton, how are we going to make that left-hand turn? Right now, with the light being there, there's a light, we know at some point we've got the arrow, we're going to be able to make the turn. With the roundabout, with the amount of traffic, I'm concerned that we aren't, it's not going to be easy to make that turn. The other concern that I have is, we're going up into Dalton, going around the roundabout, because of that traffic light being so close on Husatonix Street, traffic could, I'm guessing, back up from that point all the way around the roundabout and then back down Dalton Avenue towards Pittsfield. So that would be my concern. I say I'm not opposed to it. If it could be explained perhaps a little bit better to allay my concerns, that would be great.
Great. Thank you for your comment. And just to also share some additional information, so it's clear for everyone, I appreciate your comment, and I will, I think the Board will kind of put that into a neutral bucket that you'd like to learn more. And as we move through these steps, the Mass DOT will have a public hearing at their 25% design if they decide to move forward with either the roundabout or the signaling. And during that session, we can have a lot of design feedback on that type of question, but maybe the Mass DOT can touch on that too at the end of the meeting. That's all. Next. Alyssa, I think we're coming down.
Jeremy Trager, Kimberly Drive. Now, I was agreeing with her on if Husatonix Street is red, you're going to have backup on the roundabout, and then nobody will be able to go down South Street. So there's a delay again. The other part is, I think maybe twice a day, you have delays there. Maybe, as you were saying, accidents once a month. I think if you maybe change the light setting, put a delay between green and red, maybe two seconds, three seconds, may change the time where you can actually turn on South Street, may delay the time that people are at accidents. So that might be a solution for lights instead of changing and putting the time, as they say, 18 months into the construction of this, how much delay is going to be there? Now you're looking, where are there other exits or entrances to go to Covington, Hensdale, that people are not going to go through this construction? So you're going to have more traffic on Grinch Harbor, more traffic going up through 88. So those are things to be concerned about.
Thank you for your comment. Just a moment, though.
So you can hear me a bit better. Richard Hull, 164 Greenwich Drive. So I'm an Englishman, so I'm excited about roundabouts. We have 25,000 in England. Looking at this one, I think the roundabout's okay. I think what needs to be looked at is that lighter Husatonix Street. As some people have been pointing out, it could back up into the main roundabout, so why not put a mini roundabout in there to help traffic? And I just ran the numbers, and according to the sheets that we were given, there's 1.822104 drives through that intersection a year. So I think accidents are less of an issue than keeping the flow of traffic going well. And also, I'm on the Green Committee, so one of the things I looked at was, do roundabouts save energy? And yes, they do, because cars don't actually sit at traffic lights any longer, and the studies have shown that they save both on fuel and also on pollution. So just for that reason, it makes sense. The other thing is, not having a traffic light where the roundabout is means we don't pay for electricity for that light. Also means, if we have the power go out, as a number of people point out, our police force is sometimes stretched, but a roundabout doesn't need a policeman to direct traffic where a light does. And with that, that's my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment. All right. Go ahead.
If I could offer just a point of information. Several people have mentioned the possible problem of moving from the roundabout through the next traffic light. I do want to say that I saw on the website for this project, an explanation that there would be a sensor that if traffic was starting to back up, the light would change at Husatonix Street. So that concern has been recognized, and DOT has offered a proposal for that.
Any additional comments? Chief, do you have some stats on accidents?
I do.
Just go, grab the microphone.
Good.
Hi, everyone. Deanna Stroud, Dalton Police Chief. With everyone's comments about crashes, I thought I would pull three years of stats to give you the actual crash results. So for 2019, we had 94 total crashes in the entire town for the year. Six of them were at Main and South. Three of those had minor injuries. In my nearly 24 years, I've never seen a fatality at Main and South. Again, I really have no opinion on the roundabout, I'm just giving you factual information at this point. The bulk of those crashes that we see are rear-end crashes, so it's operator error. So that was 2019. 2020, we had a total of 76 total crashes in the entire town for the year, two of them at Main and South, both rear-end crashes, both had no injuries. And then, from January 1st of this year to today, we have had a total of 66 crashes total for the entire town, five at Main and South, no injuries. Those were rear-end, icy road, fail-to-yield, rear-end, rear-end, and an operator error. So I don't know if anyone can ask questions. That's up to you, Mr. Diver. But those are the stats we've had for three years. I don't know if that's helpful, but that was my point.
Do we have a question? Go back.
Deanna, do you have any stats for accidents at the Husatonix Street light? I would be interested in those.
I did not pull those, but I'm happy to do so, and I can give them, I can actually, I do know where you live. We're neighbors. So I'm happy to have that conversation. But I did not pull Husatonix in Main for tonight.
And Chief, if you can send those to the Board, then we'll pray to review that at the 27th meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Bissel. I live on Husatonix Street. I just have a question about the trucks. The one in North Adams is terrible for trucks. We were up there one day, and the big ones can't get around, and I'm thinking of the trucks coming up from Crane particularly, or people with, I just wonder if that, I haven't read all the material, so that may have been answered in there, but I'm curious about that.
Okay, great. We can have that in the Mass DOT comment at the end.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other comments? Go once? Go one twice? Okay, three times. Thank you, everybody, for those great comments, for, against, and neutral, and that's great feedback. And what I'm going to do now is move into reading some of the public comments I received through emails and letters. And if you can give me a moment, and please excuse my Boston accent, because I'm originally from the East Coast, so I'll do my best. But give me one minute, just to sign on and...
we see are rear-end crashes. So it's operator error. So that was 2019. 2020, we had a total of 76 total crashes in the entire town for the year. Two of them at Main and South, both rear-end crashes, both had no injuries. And then from January 1st of this year to today, we have had a total of 66 crashes total for the entire town, five at Main and South, no injuries. Those were rear-end, icy road, fail-to-ear yield, rear-end, rear-end, and an operator error. So I don't know if anyone can ask questions. That's up to you, Mr. Diver. But those are the stats we've had for three years. I don't know if that's helpful, but that was my point.
Do we have a question?
Deanna, do you have any stats for accidents at the Husatonic Street light? I would be interested in those.
I did not pull those, but I'm happy to do so and I can give them, I can actually, I do know where you live. We're neighbors. So I'm happy to have that conversation. But I did not pull Husatonic in Main for tonight.
And Chief, if you can send those to the board, then we'll pray to review that at the 27th meeting tomorrow.
I'm Nancy Bissler. I live on East Husatonic Street. I just have a question about the trucks. One in North Adams is terrible for trucks. We were up there one day and they, the big ones can't get around. And I'm thinking of the trucks coming up from Crane particularly. Are people with, I just wonder if that, I haven't read all the material, so that may have been answered in there, but I'm curious about that.
Okay, great. We can have that in the Mass DOT comment at the end.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Go once, go on twice. Okay, three times. Thank you, everybody, for those great, for those great comments, for, against, and neutral. And that's great feedback. And what I'm going to do now is move into reading some of the public comments I received through emails and letters. And if you can give me a moment and please excuse my Boston accent because I'm originally from the East Coast, so I'll do my best. But give me one minute just to sign on to the computer and grab those. This first letter is from Dan Filio, 36, Chivers Drive, Aaron, Dalton. And Dan would have been here tonight, but he's out of town on a previous family commitment. "I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposed South Street intersection reconstruction as a citizen of the town Dalton. I've lived in Dalton for my entire life and am deeply concerned about the betterment of the community. I have not taken a position on the proposed project because I want to hear all pertinent information, including the opinion of the citizens, and the final report by Mass DOT before taking a stance. If asked, I have taken this position and explained my reason while also listening and accepting other opinions. My comments are as a resident and not to be construed as a position taken by any board or committee that I may be a member of. I will not be at the September 14, 2020 meeting because of previously scheduled announced family vacation. Because of this, I welcome the opportunity to express my beliefs on the proposed construction. The announced purpose of the listening session on September 14, 2021 is to get input from the citizens so the Select Board can take a formal position on the project at the next Select Board meeting. With a word in the text, it appears that the Select Board will be taking a position on the project prior to hearing the report and recommendations on the project that will be provided by Mass DOT when they hold the hearing later in the year. To my knowledge, Mass DOT has not taken a position on either proposed project yet. The Mass DOT report will come from trained professionals whose training and education is in traffic engineering, which I believe is a valuable source of information and should be heard prior to taking an official stance. Getting input from the public and considering the opinions of the citizens is important. However, I would think that seeking this input after the people have been able to review and digest the full report by Mass DOT, thus allowing them to make an informed decision, would better suit the situation. Would it change people's minds? Probably not, but it would allow them to make a better understanding of the proposals. The responsibility of Select Board is taking positions for the betterment and safety of the community. These positions should be based on all available information, based on the decision on a project as important as the proposed reconstruction of the intersection, or incomplete information would not be in the best interest of the community. I believe that is a responsibility of Select Board to make any official decision on the project based on all information, not just public input, but also the report from Mass DOT. Sincerely, Dan Filio." This one is from Mr. Bob McBane, 43 Warren Ave, Dalton, Mass. "I'm in support of the roundabout. If the state wants to make the road that I use daily safer, I'm all for it. I think it's very misleading when one of the arguments against this project is that the money could be used for other road projects in Dalton when you know that it's not an option. I do understand why you do not want the safest roads for those, I don't understand why you do not want the safest roads for those of us who use that road daily. Please reconsider your position on this." I have a few more here. This next one is from Carol Morrison, 254 South Street, Dalton. Town Dalton Roundabout. Why? Why does a town of 2,000 citizens need a roundabout when a mile down the road there is a large business commercial area that could better use some redesign? National Historic Preservation Act. The area started with the former government mill to the Union Block as designed under the National Historic Preservation Act. The area is also mostly residential and will suffer loss of property with the installation of the roundabout. Safety. How many deaths have occurred over the years at South and Main Street? Accidents do happen, but they also have happened in other areas where intersections exist. How will this affect the many townspeople and children who walk from South Street to the center of town during the construction and afterwards? Will South Street be divided from the center of town because of this? What will be the impact of the area businesses before, during, and after this project? Town. How will this benefit the citizens of Dalton, many being either the youngest and oldest of its population? Has the town requested this roundabout? Were they made aware this roundabout was being considered? Has the town been asked what it does need from the Department of Transportation, such as the South Street Bridge, which is deteriorating to the point of cement siding collapsing, rebar shown and the bridge slowly sinking into the riverbed? How can we believe the completion date of two and a half years when its record of completion of smaller bridges throughout Berkshires is still ongoing after two years? Common sense and awareness of these issues is solely missing. Greatly expanded 18-wheel trucks and truck beds carrying large pieces of cement building sections is of concern and would be greatly impacted as a roundabout would have to be enlarged enough to accommodate them. Thank you for your interest in the roundabout topic." This next one is from Carrie Thompson, 361 Orchard Road. "I'm writing in opposition to the rotary roundabout proposed for the intersection in Dalton. I have lived in Dalton nearly all my life with a good portion of it growing up on Fred Crane's estate, now Berkshire Money Management, so I'm very familiar with the proposed site. Currently, I work at the hospital in the Holyoke area. Depending upon my route of travel, there and home, I'm subjected to three different rotaries, one of which does not work well, the other two do work well for the respective area. The proposed Dalton site I strongly feel would not work well. It would also cause even greater traffic delays for the time it is being built, as well as having to take properties, take the expanded rotary, or the expanded roadway for this project. We also have the issue of not having another good option to get in and out of town unless going up and over Washington Mountain Road as Gulf Road is the only option for a few months in the summer. As you can see, I'm not against rotaries or roundabouts. They just need to be appropriately placed. I strongly oppose this project in Dalton. Please pass along my comments to the state. Sincerely, Carrie Thompson, 361 Orchard Road." I have four more, folks. This one is from Karen Graham, Dalton. She did not include her address. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the meeting on September 14th as I'll be out of town. I have lived in Dalton my entire life. I do not think a roundabout is the answer to anything. I do believe it will create more headache than anything. With that said, I have one very major concern that I hope you will bring up at the meeting for me. My understanding is that there will be, my understanding is that there will still be traffic lights at Husatonic Street. So when heading into Dalton, you go through the roundabout and will get stuck at the light in Husatonic Street. Seems to me that will create a backup of cars in that little section. At normal times, it may not be, it may not be a problem, but when there's a lot of traffic backup, we'll be extending to the roundabout. With the roundabout blocked, traffic will go nowhere and cars coming off South Street will be unable to even enter the roundabout. I sincerely do not believe that a roundabout is going to solve any issues. I do believe that some of the issues may be resolved if the traffic lights were synced better. The other issues can only be resolved if people would become more conscientious drivers and obey the red lights and stop signs and pay attention to other vehicles. Thank you for presenting this for me. This next one is from Rebecca Abbott, 447 High Street in Dalton. "I travel through this intersection almost every day and have not found it to be problematic. Traffic flows through smoothly with no serious backups and there is no confusion about the traffic lanes. Not only is a proposed roundabout unnecessary, but the period of construction would be terribly disruptive on the main route between Dalton and Pittsfield. I oppose it strenuously." This one, this next one's from Mr. Richard Haley. "Mr. Diver, I'm unable to make the meeting tonight. But I want to let you know that after I've reviewed the documents that Mass DOT has provided, I am not in favor of them putting a roundabout in the intersection of South and Main. I believe their option of updating the signage and signaling would be most efficient." And this last one is from Sandra Thompson, no address. "South and Main Streets do not need a roundabout. It is fine the way it is. Dalton needs a roundabout at Main, Orchard, Old Windsor Road, and Hinsdale Road intersection. The high school traffic at the intersection is horrendous. It is an accident waiting to happen. And traffic backs up so no one can exit the side streets along Main Street. I cannot attend the meeting due to health issues, but please use this email. Thank you. Sandra Thompson, East Eman," I don't know if she did put her, "East Eman Street in Dalton." And that is all I had for those letters and email comments. So thank you for that. And then is there anyone from the Traffic Commission? Kind of looking around. Bill or Chief or?
So I would say we three are representatives from the Traffic Commission. And Chief, oh, sorry, I still call him Chief Filio, but Chief Filio gave his statements. You know, I think we're all open-minded. I don't want to speak for everyone. We're all open-minded to see what Mass DOT has to say. Those of you who have said about the roundabout on Orchard, Route 8, and Main Street, I cannot agree with you more. That is actually our biggest problem intersection. So thank you for those comments. I totally agree with that issue. But I mean, we're just open-minded and listening to the presentations as everyone else, so.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any remarks on Mass DOT?
Hi, I'm Mark Moore. I'm the Project Development Engineer for Mass DOT District 1, based out of Lanx. I will try and speak up. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Selectmen for the opportunity to hear from the community and we value the towns' comments on this project. I do want to clarify the purpose of this project and why we're here is because Mass DOT evaluates crash locations throughout the Commonwealth. And by region, we evaluate locations and identify the top 5%, crash locations in each region. This intersection was identified as one of those top 5% crashes. The Highway Safety Improvement Program funding that we have is only eligible to fix crash locations that were identified as top 5%. So it's just, we have a desire to improve this location, to get it off that top 5% list. And so we are very committed to finding a solution to improve safety at this location. That said, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie to answer some of those specific questions.
Thanks, Mark. So I'll try to go through and answer as many as I can going through. So one of the concerns was the duration of construction. With either design, the signal, or the roundabout, there will be construction delays and the construction duration will vary. When we come back out for the design public hearing at the 25%, we'll have a better idea of what that construction duration will be and when that timeframe will be. And then at the 75% level, we'll have actual plans, kind of showing the construction staging and how we'll accommodate emergency vehicles and larger trucks during those, and pedestrians and cyclists during those times. For, there was one about kids and, or bicyclists and ped crossings. So both of this, all of the signals, so with the two signals, there'll be a push button. So they'll be able to push the button. The walk signal will stop all lights. It'll be an exclusive ped phase for both intersections. And there'll be a set time for cyclists and pedestrians to cross the street. So that will be the same here at the signal. And then at the roundabout, they'll be, we'll be installing what are called rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So similar, it's a push button that the cyclist or the pedestrian would use, and it would flash the sign with a red light telling vehicles to stop. It would give the pedestrian the right of way to cross, the pedestrian or cyclist the right of way to cross. You can kind of see them here in their approximate location with these little boxes on the plans. So it will be safer for all modes.
And those islands in the middle?
Yes. So those will be raised pedestrian refuge areas. So it'll be six-inch granite. So there will be protection. They'll be at least six feet wide. And I'm not sure the exact length of them. The delays, so yes, the roundabout will slow down vehicle speeds. But as for the operations, the signals will cause a delay of about, in the morning, 29 seconds. So a car could idle for 29 seconds to make it through. The light at South Street and Main Street, and at South Street and West Husatonic, it's 26 seconds. And for the roundabout, the delay for both is about seven seconds. So the wait time is lower. Tom did explain the traffic backup. So the one signal at Main Street and West Husatonic will be equipped with loop detectors. The loop detectors will be placed right past the roundabout. So once those are triggered, it'll alert the signal to go to a red at West Husatonic. So it'll allow the main line to run through and clear out the roundabout. Sorry, bear with me. There was two more questions. Oh, just the crashes. So in the handout, the frequently asked questions handout does explain how we got to the property damage value and explaining how this location was picked to be in that top 5%. So if we could get the additional numbers from 2019 through 2021, we can rerun the calculation too and show that. So I think that's it. If anyone has any other questions?
Great. Thank you, the Mass DOT team, for those comments. A procedural question that's on top of my mind is when you get to the 25% design and the Mass DOT preferred solution, say the preferred solution's a roundabout, we look at that design and we don't have consensus in the town or there's more against because they learned more, more, you know, can you go back to the light, to the signaling? At what, like really, at what point do you make that final decision of the solution?
I mean, we'd certainly prefer not to go through the whole design effort to get to 25% design public hearing to then go backwards. But the whole purpose of the design public hearing is to solicit input and including input from people who couldn't make it tonight. So it's certainly a possibility, but not preferred.
Thank you. With that, we will turn to the Select Board for comments.
I have a question from Mass DOT. You may not be able to answer this. What's the average daily car count going through there? I know you, I had that information at the presentation before.
I think it's around 6,000 cars a day.
And I think the material that, excuse me?
It's around 6,000 cars a day, but I would need a few more minutes to give you the exact number.
That's okay. And I think the material during the presentation back in March, it was over an eight-year period, there was something like maybe 100 accidents. So 5,000 cars a day times 365 per year times eight years. It's like 14 million cars and they had 100 accidents in an eight-year period. That's all I got to say.
When will the 25% design phase be complete? And is that public hearing scheduled? Okay. I'm going to echo Mr. Filio's comments that were read into the record. I believe it's premature for the Select Board or any town official to take a position on this issue until we've heard more information, particularly the 25% design presentation and public hearing. So that's my position. Thank you.
Yeah, the only comments I have is I live right in, I'd be affected by this. My house is right at the start of this thing. I'm worried about walking, people walking on bicycles. There's a lot of people walking with this, I'm looking at this rotary setup with constant cars moving. I'm not so sure if I'd like to plan with these little crosswalks. I mean, you're still going to be stopping traffic. And I'm not so convinced on this Husatonic Street. Hussetonic Street light, how it's going to back up traffic. Even if it's on a delay, I've seen the times where this whole thing will back up, and I just would like some more clarification. Hopefully, the future plans will address that.
The only -- the only comment I have is really a procedural concern, and that's the reason why I proposed to have this listening session, to get feedback from residents. And the procedural concern is when you're at the 25% design session, it's hard to go back. So once we reach a 25% design session, if the proposal is Mass DOT is a roundabout, more likely than not, that will be what's coming to Dalton. So that is my procedural concern. And so as long as Mass DOT is open to hearing from more residents at the design session, there's a higher likelihood of going to the signaling, that they address that as the solution. So that's my only concern.
I'll echo that, absolutely.
Yep. And the other -- the other thing is that, as asked for, and I appreciate everyone's attendance and all the letters and emails, et cetera, Mass DOT does have a really detailed project analysis on the website, which has been open and available for a long time. So a lot of the data, a lot of the information that decisions are made on, is already available. It's a matter of reviewing that data and analyzing that for the town. So that's my only concern, is that you can't -- it's going to be very challenging to go With that, we kind of went through this pretty quickly, and again, I appreciate everyone's comments, but I'd like to pause for a moment and just give an opportunity. Is there any more questions that we -- or people that we didn't hear from? And as -- look right ahead. Was all set? One in the back?
Actually, this is more personal than anything. I haven't really totally made up my mind. See the house there? That's me. I live there. So I'm wondering, am I going to be able to get out into the rotary, my driveway, and is it going to be closer than it is now, the street to my house? Because I don't want to be shaking hands with cars out my front window, you know? And also, there's a tree that is about 150 years old, and I would hate to see that go. That's, like I said, my questions are kind of personal.
Sure. Sure. And what we can do is we can actually email. John Freeman from Mass DOT has been always, always helpful, and we can send him an email on your behalf where we can provide his contact information, and he can kind of address that question specifically on the design. If that's -- would that be right?
Okay. Is that the existing on the right-hand side? Is that the way it is now? The existing?
It's actually not.
No.
It's not. No, so on the right-hand side, that sidewalk is moved slightly to the north to accommodate the larger, what will be called the shared-use path. So the sidewalk that's there now will be separated by a grass buffer strip, and it will be wider, so it'll be about eight feet wide. So it'll allow cyclists and pedestrians to use that sidewalk. So if they don't feel comfortable on the roadway, they can use that sidewalk. So it will be further off the roadway, pushed further to the left, but actually to the north.
Now, you're going to take part of Crane's parking lot if you put in the rotary? Is that what I'm seeing, or? I'm not in good understanding.
I guess this parking lot here, or?
No, no, no. Across the street. Across the street.
Here?
Right there.
No, so this darker color just shows that these are the limits of paving. So when this job is all done, there'll be new pavement here, so we'll match into their existing driveway. We'll tie into the existing sidewalk over here, and we'll tie into the existing sidewalk over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, up, Mr. Hall?
I have one question. At the Hussetonic Junction on the rotary --
Microphone, so folks at home can hear you.
Sorry, on the pedestrian crossing at Hussetonic Street, there's a green border next to pedestrian crossing. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. That's actually called a bike box. So currently, there's bike lanes on West Hussetonic, so if you're a cyclist, it allows you to kind of cut in the line in front of the cars, and this will be bike -- where the bikes can wait, so they'll be able to either cross the street here and they're able to use the shared-use path, or if they're an avid cyclist and would like to use the roadway, then that gives them the advantage.
Again, thank you very -- Chief, did you have a question? Just stretching.
So I'm going to address this to you. So my concern is our traffic is heaviest from 7:00 AM to about 8:30, 9:00 AM, and then again, 2:15 in the afternoon until about 5:00 PM. So with no traffic lights at Main and South, what does the traffic trying to get out of those intersections? It's going to very much slow that traffic pattern down. It's an extreme amount of traffic. How do the people coming out of South Street get out without a huge backup?
So the predominant move being from South Street here tonight. So they'll actually have a free-flow move where this is a raised median island that they'll be able to kind of get right into this lane and kind of have a straight pass down through West Hussetonic. If they can -- would like to continue up towards the center of town, they'll have enough time to merge in and travel north. Just travel through. Okay. Yeah.
Great. Thank you again. One more? Well, there's one more, and then we're going to wrap up, but -- and I'll make some comments, so please don't leave a few very important comments to make.
Speaking as a cyclist, the notion of cyclists riding on sidewalks frightens me. I'm old enough to remember when every year, the Dalton Police would show up in our grammar school and teach us that the law says that cyclists are supposed to ride in the traffic lane with the cars as far to the right as possible. They were not supposed to ride on sidewalks, because under the law, cyclists or bicycles are considered as wheel vehicles, to be the equivalent of a motor vehicle, and driving a cycle bicycle on the sidewalk is the equivalent of riding a motorcycle or car on a sidewalk. So I would rather, in this design, see -- I don't see any dedicated cycle bicycle lanes on that section of Main Street. That's something that's really been needed, especially going up the hill in that climbing lane into the up Crane Hill. Riding on that is hard enough as it is with the rough pavement, but when you're squeezed in between the curb and some truck's rearview mirror, it can be pretty damn tough. I'd like to see eventually some sort of bicycle lane run the whole length of -- from Pittsfield all the way up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And in closing, I just want to again say thank you to everyone who attended tonight. Thank you for all the letters, and thank you for everyone listening at home or listening to the streaming service. The Select Board will meet again on the 27th. If you have additional comments or folks who haven't been able to submit a comment, feel free to do so, and my email is on the website. You can come to me as a chair, and I'll share it with the committee. I also want to take a moment and just say, just do an introduction to some new folks in town. So I think everybody knows Mr. Hutchinson, maybe or maybe not a new town manager, and he has been doing a fabulous job, so thank you for choosing the town of Dalton, and it's a pleasure working with you. And then also Alyssa, who was our new executive assistant, so again, welcome. Stand up and say hi, and so everybody can see at home, and all that kind of stuff. So and then Brittany, who's our recording secretary. She's been doing it for years and doing a great job, but she's behind the scenes and helping us with minutes and whatnot. And the message to -- for everyone at home is that you always have a Select Board that is open and accessible. We listen to the residents, and we want to make sure we have the residents' voice in these very, very important decisions along the way. So thank you, and thank you to the Mass DOT for joining, and with that, have a great night and good night, Dalton. All right. Thank you. Proceed. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Aye.